I'd like to call this March 18th, 2021, meeting of the Strongsville Board of Education to order. Mr. Onagnostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Soli?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mrs. Howson?
Here.
All are here, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is our district goals. As always, we remind ourselves that we have three goals: student achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And tonight, I just want to give a shout out to Dr. Raiba. We're going to highlight student achievement and growth. And if you haven't seen the press release or haven't watched the State of Ohio video, Dr. Raiba testified in front of, in Columbus, in support of revamping the state's report card. It's a project he's been working on for over two years, and it's good that it's bearing fruit. And hopefully, we'll have some positive results from that. But what I wanted to highlight before I turn it over to Dr. Raiba is that the goal is to not get rid of the report card. The goal is to give it more meaning and make it a tool that will help each district, including Strongsville, to improve. And so I think that's a great, a great first start, and we look forward to how it develops. Do you have any comments, Cameron?
It's just been a great opportunity representing superintendents around the state. The bill is House Bill 200. There's another bill from the Senate, similar for report card reform, that'll probably come out next week. So it's exciting to see that something is going to happen. So there's a lot of work that's going to happen, probably starting after spring break for us in terms of it going through the legislative process. But again, what we want to do is create a more comprehensive system that tells more of a story about school districts. It's still related to testing, but tells a good story, gives information to families in a way that's understandable and meaningful, and is usable information by the school district. So a new way to look at it, some of the measures that were confusing in the past, we hopefully, we've simplified and can communicate in an accurate way. But with anything, there's some debates that will go on to determine what the report card will look like. The good thing is, both bills are slating changes for the upcoming 2021, '22 report cards. So if that's the first opportunity, we'd see some changes. And I just want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to be involved in these things. I know sometimes it does take me away from my day-to-day duties here, but it's been a great experience, and hopefully, we'll see some meaningful changes.
Good to hear. Congratulations, and hopefully, the community sees that as an example of how we foster student achievement and growth. Next on the agenda is public comment. I don't see any slips. Is there anyone? We have no public comment. Do we have any recognition tonight?
No recognitions. But we've got a lot coming up in April.
And we're excited about that. That's one of the best parts of our board meeting, and I think, speaking for all of us, one of the things we look forward to. Seven is approval of minutes. We have the February 4th, February 11th, and February 18th Board of Education meetings. All district video and audio recordings are a permanent part of the minutes and available on our website. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Howson. Any discussion? Hearing none. Would you take the role?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. And I turn it over to Mr. Onagnostu for treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have quite a few items for your consideration tonight. I think it's the most I've had on agenda in quite a while, so bear with me tonight. The first item is the financial report for the month ending February 28th, 2021, which can be found in Exhibit A. And just to give a quick update, I do have the supplement report at your seats, and also, it's posted on the website for anyone watching at home under the Treasurers Department, in addition to the exhibit that's on the, in the report. So how we're doing through the month of May, or the month of, I'm sorry, the month of February, not May. How we're doing through the month of February is current year-to-date revenue collections are trending 919,000 favorably compared to the November forecast, or 1.1%, and expenditures are trending about 1.4 million under the November forecast, or 1.8% under forecast. How that's impacting cash, that's adding an additional 2.3 million to the November forecast for our ending cash balance, which will give us an operating surplus for the year of 8.7 million. Revenues, how we're doing month-to-month compared to, in comparison to last February. Revenues compared to last February are down by 120,000, and it's primarily two factors. One is the tax advances through February, or for the month of February, down 280,000 compared to last February. And that's more of a timing issue with how, with the mail, and I believe also, the deadline was extended a week this year as well. So we did, in March, we do receive the settlement, and we've received it. And the rev tax, property taxes have come in as expected compared to the forecast, and about half a million more than the forecast, which we had lower the collection rate. So overall, though, this is good, overall, the property taxes came in as expected and more. So I have that fully reconciled and reported for the March report. And the others, all of the revenues, it's less compared to last year, as last year, we had a one-time property tax settlement agreement that was received in February, that we didn't receive this February, but we had others that we received this fiscal year. We had a couple, I believe, was received in January, and others that may, might be received next month. So more of a timing, but different agreements as well. Year-to-year comparison for revenues, compared to this February, compared to last February, revenues are up by 4.1 million, and it's primarily the second half of the new levy fully coming in at 100%. And then also, we had the 1.1 million Bureau of Workers' Compensation refunds and dividend payments, which were offset against decreases in revenue and state aid for the kindergarten tuition and interest due to, and lower interest. And then how revenue is comparing against the forecast. Revenue's trending about 1.1% or 900,000 greater than the forecast through February. The biggest increases are the state aid. We had, when we did the forecast, it was based on the reduction that was anticipated at the beginning of the year. However, in January, the governor announced partial restoration of the foundation funding formula, and we received a retro payment for that in February to get us caught up. So in March, it's, it should be on track compared to, at the normal, or at a greater amount per month than the previous months. And then moving on to expenditures. A month-over, a month-to-month comparison from February of last year to February this year, revenues are about $371,000 higher compared to last February, and it's primarily due to salary and benefit costs. Month, month, or year-to-year comparison from February of last year to February this year, we're about 985,000 greater in expenditures, which is again, mainly due to higher salary and benefits costs. And then, as the forecast is trending for the rest of the year compared to the November forecast, we're about $1.4 million less than the November forecast. And the decreases there are made up of, in salaries and benefits, about 600,000 less, and then purchase services, about $900,000 less due to some budget savings and cost holder, cost holder estimates in the forecast due to some unknowns with COVID. So that concludes the financial report. If there's any questions?
Any questions for George? Nice job, George.
Thanks. And then, moving on to Item B, the tax rate resolution, which can be found in Exhibit B. This is an annual resolution where, if you recall back at the organizational meeting in January, I approved the tax budget. The tax budget gets sent to the county, and the county uses the tax budget to set the tax rates for the current tax year for the next, for next collection year, for 2022. While we do that, they look at, one, all of our levies that are out there, but especially the bond levy, the bond issue that we have to collect repayment. Since we had the refunding of the bond issue, we were able to lower the mileage rate that is collected to pay back that amount, which is going to go into effect in this tax rate resolution. So we're able to lower the tax rate by half a mil, so from 2.7 mils to 2.3 mils. So what that means to everyone is a direct savings to their next year's tax bills of $17.50 per $100,000 evaluation. So the work that we were able to do through the bond refunding, where we came close to a $20 million savings, 14 million present value savings, that it was a direct impact savings to the property owners. And then moving on to Item C, new funds for fiscal year 2021. We have two. We have a new student activities account at the high school. It's for the High School German Honor Society. And also, a new, a new federal grant that was just awarded to us, and it's under the Fund 516 for the Parent-Mentor Project Supplemental. They gave, we received $2,000 for supplies to be used for the parent mentor program. Item D is grant approvals, which is for the Parent-Mentor Grant of 2000. And then Item E is a student activities program and budgets for the new High School German Honor Society, and with a budget of $850. And then Item F, which can be found in Exhibit D, is amendments to the permanent appropriation. The amendments include the appropriations for the Parent-Mentor Grant, the High School German Honor Society, and then various state and federal grants, which, the auxiliary service grant, we received the final allocation. So we were able to set, set their annual budget as the final payment was received for them, as we appropriated at an estimate, a conservative estimate, 10% less than what they received last year, just in case they don't receive the same amount. So we received it, we were able to up their appropriation, and then the other items were for federal funds reallocations by the state of Ohio. And then moving on to Item G, it's a separate vote. It's bids for depository contracts. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that a resolution authorizing the treasurer to seek bids for depository contracts for active and interim deposits be approved, which can be found in Exhibit E. And what this is, it's for bank services. By law, through Ohio Revised Code, we have to go out to bid every five years for banking services. And the reason this needs to be approved first is, we need banking services, so based on the results of the RFP, that we have to accept one of the results versus other RFPs, we don't have to accept the results of the RFP. So what we've done in the past, we received, we put out the RFP, we received the bids back from the banks, and we normally accept all of the, I would say, majority of the bids. That way, we can use those banks for that five-year period if we need to. That way, they're, they're approved, or we can continue to use our current bank if they, if they so choose to put a bid in.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Howson. Any discussion? Hearing none. George, take the role.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Moving on to Item H, service agreement for SC Strategic Solutions. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the Board of Education enters into a service agreement with strategic solutions for approximately 193,000 for professional service to digitize district records, which can be found in Exhibit F. And also, there was an update to the exhibit, which I provided at your tables and out on the table as well. But the website should be updated. And this was based on the board discussion we had at the last meeting.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
George, can you give, again, a brief overview of the, all the different records that'll be digitized?
So the records that will be digitized are, are student records, both the special education and the, and regular ed records that are housed here in the board office, and also, the ones at the school buildings are HR payroll benefit, permanent records as well. So all the current, all the current student, all the current and permanent student records will be digitized, as well as all of our permanent human resource and payroll files.
Thank you.
George, we looked at this last time as well, at a, at a lower amount, and we've added in those active things. Can you speak to why we decided to do it all now? Is there, is it going to be more efficient for us?
Yeah, so when I, when I presented the last meeting, what wasn't in there was the records that were at the school buildings for the current, for the current students, for their current regular ed files. Once we assessed the quotes, it was about, the delta was, I'm trying to do the math by the top. I had a little over $10,000, no, about $20,000 difference. So for efficiency, we, we figured, let's do it over the summer while the, while the secretaries are away. And when they come back, everything is at least digitized for the current student records. That way, it's all in the system, and we can just move forward.
I see that there's also the scanners in there, so those will be used at each building going forward?
So that's an optional cost, the scanners.
Okay.
So we put the scanners, so they quoted me if we need the scanners. So ideally, we would like to use, try using our, our printer, printer-scanner combos that we have.
Okay.
And if those work, then we wouldn't need the printers. But if we would need to purchase any scanners based on volume, he just quoted me on what they would cost. So we estimated, I believe, 13 at 6,500, and I think it's about $500 per scanner if we need to. I think the only immediate one we would need is at Surratt, just because they don't have one of those big scanners in the office, to the size of the office, and possibly, another for student services, based on the number of volume. But other than that, I think we can at least try with what we have, and it should be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to add, this is a one-time heavy lift. You know, going forward, we won't have this problem, because whether it's the scanners, or if we do need the desktop scanners, records going forward are going to be digitized by default. So this is to take care of our existing records, and then they'll be properly, safely destroyed. And then, moving forward, we won't have this problem, because we'll be able to have a cadence and a procedure that all these records will be digitized as part of our standard operating procedure. I, we had this discussion earlier at the previous board meeting, and I brought up some concerns about privacy and security. And thanks to George, we had a conference call with the vendor, and I just wanted to share with the public all the, all the concerns I had from a privacy and a security standpoint, from a malware standpoint, or a virus standpoint. Were all addressed. The company's a nice boutique firm. They do one, one niche project, and they do it really well. And that's helping primarily schools and municipalities in Ohio stay compliant with Ohio Revised Code, but also, be part of the 21st century and have documents that are online and available by computer. So we don't have some of the issues we talked about when we were looking at this project, as far as record retrieval and things like that. So those tools will become available to us starting next school year. And I think from a customer service standpoint, our parents and our taxpayers will, will expect and be able to have a better response when they need to get records, to get transcripts, get whatever. It won't be such a frustrating experience, so that's a good thing. And then we were able to negotiate, you know, one of our concerns was the backups. And we asked, and they responded, and so they're going to provide the external hard disks with all of those records four times a year. And then we're also going to explore, Mr. Binkley in the audience is going to explore being able to do those backups through the internet, so that if something, security-wise occurs, we have, we have the data ourselves, and we're protecting the, the information that's entrusted to us. But I was, you know, all our concerns were answered, and I, I'm happy to be able to support the, the measure. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Hearing none, take the role.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
All right, so the next, the next two items are both related to the, to the Booster Club. And I do have our Strongsville Athletic Booster Club president here, Mr. Keith Howson. The first one is the acceptance of the proceeds for the 2020 car raffle. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that a donation in the amount of $20,606 be accepted from the Strongsville Athletic Booster Club from the proceeds of the 2020 car raffle. Before we open for discussion, I do want to commend Keith and the Booster Club. Based on the current year that we had with no, basically no attendance at the sporting events, where a lot of the tickets were sold. They did a great job selling these tickets. It was, it was down about, what, 1,500 from last year? So given the circumstances, that's an incredible, incredible effort and accomplishment. So thank you, Keith, and thank you, your team.
Yeah, if I can say a few words about that as well, I do want to thank the community for really supporting the efforts here. And I absolutely have to also congratulate and thank, you know, Rob and Miko, who's headed up the fundraising efforts for the past four years. For those, in the past four years, not only did we do the 20,600 for this year, it totaled about $113,000, which, when we started out on this goal, you know, four years ago, you know, our goal was, you know, $100,000. So I think, especially dealing with COVID, I think the, the efforts of a lot of people, you know, we were fortunate enough to, you know, exceed our goals for that time period. So we appreciate the opportunity to do so, and we're happy to do so.
Thanks, Keith. Motion.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I just, on behalf of the board and the school district, I wanted to thank Keith for his leadership in the entire Strongsville Athletic Boosters. It's just a great example of when we, when you work together, what you can accomplish. But as Keith, as Keith indicated, it's been over $100,000 that goes back to the district, that benefits the district. One of the things that I really like about the project is its genesis was the turf at the football field, and we made a promise to make sure that we would take care of that investment. And this is the vehicle, not to be too trite, this is the vehicle that, you know, puts action to our words. But, you know, that $115,000, half of that is in the turf fund. And when the turf needs to be replaced, we will have the funds ready and available to maintain that commitment. So thanks again to Keith, and keep up the good work.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Any other questions or discussion? Take the role.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Stane.
And the motion carries. Thank you again.
Absolutely.
And the next item is a property use agreement. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the Board of Education enters into a property use agreement with the Strongsville Athletic Boosters, as outlined per the attached exhibit, which can be found in Exhibit G. And what this is, is Keith and the boosters, in concert with Athletic Director Danny Ziegler, have been going out and getting sponsorship agreements to be displayed on various athletic, on various athletic complexes and part-of-the-field fencing areas in the athletics area. So this agreement allows us to allow Keith to go out and seek those bids for those areas outlined in the property use agreement.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Keith, do you want to describe it a little more?
Yeah, I'd love to. So I appreciate you guys taking this into consideration. You know, if we think about what the mission is of the Athletic Boosters, is our goal is to encourage and give the kids the best opportunity we can in supporting the district and the kids' efforts as being student athletes. As we all know, funds are tight from a district perspective, and the boosters try to kind of fill in the stop gaps. If we think about things that we have bought historically, you know, it can be equipment, you know, if it's a high-jump pit, a pole vault pit. Every year, we buy the uniforms, and one of my personal favorite expenses is what we call team success. And that's when the kids are of the opportunity to go down to states, we provide them the, if it's transportation for girls soccer this year with the bus, or if it's the hotels, if it's the meals, we absolutely want to encourage that, and we absolutely pay for that, you know, hands down. Against my favorite expense that we have. But the property use agreement here allows us to, really, another vehicle to help expand our fundraising opportunities. You know, we do the membership drive, we do night races, and we do golf outing, and we have had some great success in doing all of that. But we have an opportunity to do even more. And by doing more, it really gives us an opportunity to provide more for our kids. You know, we look at what our wish list is with the Athletic Director, Danny Ziegler, you know, myself, the rest of the board, the rest of the parents and the kids in the program. I wish this is a mile long, you know, for things that we would love to have, but just, we haven't had the funds to do so. So our goal really is to be the premier, premier district. And it's also on the sports side. We want to be premier of sports. We want to give the kids the best of the opportunities. So when we, this property use agreement, again, will help extend our, I guess, our mission statement and be able to give back more to the kids.
Did you have a comment?
I did. I just wanted to commend, you know, the booster, throughout my time as superintendent, the boosters have really looked at our opportunities for advertising in a new lens, and has really brought additional revenue to our sports program, being able to do the things that you're able to do. So I want to commend, you know, Dan Martin, who led that charge, and Keith, who's continuing that on with, with a lot of agreements that are in the works and tables, on the table, so I appreciate that. And just procedurally, we have a policy that's not very old, that we did in terms of advertising on the school district. So just for the board's knowledge, you are allocating the space, and then, once advertising is finalized for that space, then it's the superintendent's approval of the actual advertising in that space. So that's how both of, this relationship works between the board and the boosters and the superintendent. So I'm excited about this next phase of the opportunity and utilizing some of the spaces to bring some funds back to the district.
I think it's a great project. One, one of the things it allows is the Athletic Boosters can receive funds, and it's a tax exemption. So from a, from a contributor or a donor standpoint, it adds a little bit of moxie to it. If, you know, people can, people, and if anyone's interested, see George, but people can make donations directly to the district. However, they do not get a tax benefit for that. So this is a vehicle to, to allow that and encourage that. And, you know, frankly, it's one extra thing to help us do what we do and do it well. And then ultimately, as a school district, we have values, and we have things that we want to protect. So making sure that the superintendent approves any of the advertising, you know, make sure we don't, you know, it's not like we're just selling billboard space on a, on a highway. We do have some standards that we want to make sure we follow, and would only want advertising that represents the district well. So that protects us that way. But all in all, this is excellent, and, you know, we've But all in all, this is excellent and, you know, we've all been, many of us have been involved with the Athletic Boosters for a number of years, and it just seems like every year they get better and better and are able to deliver more opportunities for our student athletes. So that's a great thing, and I wanted to commend Keith directly, but again, it's not just Keith, it's not just Dan Martin, it's the entire team, so they have our thanks. Any other discussion?
Just for clarity, any donations to the district are tax deductible?
Oh, they are.
Yeah, it's just under a different IRS code. So they're a 501(c)(3), so it's preferable. You go through the Booster Club.
Excellent. Well, I now learned a new wrinkle. So start writing those checks directly to the district also. Hearing no other discussion, take the roll, George.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hausel?
Upstain.
And the motion carries. Next is superintendent's report.
Can I make one more comment? I appreciate this. So thank you very, again, very much for the support. I do want to announce, you know, Serpentine Chevrolet is our premier sponsor for athletic programs, and that arrangement is with the district. Raising Canes is also a significant sponsor as well, also with the district. But now with this agreement, it allows me to announce that we have also have a major sponsorship with Ganley GMC, Buick GMC, that now we'll be able to solidify this weekend. Obviously, these discussions have been going on for several weeks, and everybody, you know, is well aware of it. Again, thank you for allowing us to do this, and hopefully I can announce several other large sponsorships here in the next month or two. But again, thank you very much, and I want to make sure we got that in.
Buy American and eat chicken. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Keith.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miko. Couple updates under our responsible restart topic. Just the building level data continues trending in a good direction. We've got a couple of data points that we still have to collect that weren't finalized by the time I put this together today. If you take a look at the staff, we have one red criteria for staff absence rate. That's not COVID-related, and it's based on two days where we had a high absence rate that skewed the average. So we're in a good spot at SARAR in terms of staff absences. We're in a, again, this is part of a bigger data pool that we look at. Even though things are good, we're still looking at this on a weekly basis, share the updates with the board. But, you know, we're still doing very good. We did have a few cases this week due to things outside of the school district, but we're trending in the right direction. And, you know, today for our staff, for those that got the vaccine, is the official day that we're fully vaccinated. So that's exciting news for our staff and for our district because it allows us to stay open continuously. I also wanted to give a few general updates in terms of that topic of the vaccination and COVID-related items. So I put in my update and just wanted to share with the board and everyone that for the rest of the school year, we are going to stay with the same health and safety protocols that we had. I had a conversation with a few families about, you know, this topic, and I just want to add to it. When we think about, hey, health and safety protocols, we automatically go to sanitation and masks and social distancing. We have a lot of other restrictions in our district right now. We have no visitors, we have no field trips, we have kids cannot switch classes at the elementary level, lunches in the classroom. So as we take a look at, sticking with the procedures and protocols we have in place for the rest of this school year, when we start looking for next school year, we have a lot of decisions to make based on where we are as we get towards the fall part of the year, and that'll be in consultation with our healthcare professionals. You know, CDC obviously makes recommendations, those come to the Ohio Department of Health and our local Board of Health. So we'll be staying with our current restrictions throughout the rest of the school year. If guidance changes, we'll take that into consideration. But even though, if you read the CDC guidance, it said if you're fully vaccinated, you don't have to wear masks, you don't have to social distance, as long as you're not in large groups or with folks that are at higher health risk, we're not going to change any of those protocols for our district. Talking about possible or notifications of changes, so, you know, the governor shares things on his press conferences, and as our community hears those things, that's the first time we hear them as well. So I just wanted everybody to know, you know, I believe it was Tuesday or Thursday last week, the governor said, hey, we're going to change quarantine rules for spring sports. You no longer have to quarantine for the 14 days. You don't have to quarantine if you're in the allowable limit in schools. That is the first time we heard that as well. And so it goes, we have to kind of process that. It goes through his words, then go to the Ohio Department of Health, that then go to what we could do as a school district. So I just continue to ask for our community's patience and understanding. Just because the governor says it does not mean that that rule gets implemented immediately. There's a process that goes through. So Jenny, if you would update kind of on the new rules for spring sports based on the guidance that now has come through the Ohio Department of Health?
Sure, so it's been a little crazy, a lot of different changes, and I know it's confusing. So what we're trying to do, based on what we're allowed to do per the Ohio Department of Health, is just try to keep everything the same. So, you know, again, it's a quarantine of 10 days if you're, you know, within six feet of somebody longer than 15 minutes without a mask. And that means if you're outside of school, if you're at an athletic event, if you're participating in athletics, or, you know, within school eating lunch with somebody, that is what we're going with. However, that would be an exposure if you test on day five, six, or seven of those days. You can return with a negative test, a negative PCR test, which is a viral test, you can return on day eight of that quarantine period. And that is now for everybody, including our athletes. So our athletes can resume their athletic sports on day eight with a negative test. Again, we're still continuing with, you know, within school, if you're over three feet and you have a mask on, you can continue to go to school and you can continue your sport as well. So those are the major changes, just trying to keep it simple as clear as possible and the same for everybody. So athletes are no longer carved out, and we were able to make that change this past Wednesday. It began, and we contacted anybody that was in the middle of that too, to try to get them back to their sport. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Jenny. And the other thing that we've been working on in terms of, you know, kind of under the idea of what we've gone through this year is summer programming. So typically, we have a summer school. You know, a lot of those traditional aspects will still be there, plus a lot of enhancements, so I wanted Jenny to provide. Jenny's working with Aaron and Dave and Andy. They've worked tirelessly over the past few weeks, have come up with a great plan. We're not ready, we shared some videos and highlights of it in the last update that parents could have seen, but just wanted to kind of talk a little bit about logistics. So Jenny, if you want to go through some of this.
Sure, so, you know, the governor did come out and mandate that schools create a plan to address learning loss, any gaps in learning that have occurred due to the pandemic, due to the changes in frameworks and situations of different families. And so, you know, I feel our plan is very comprehensive. I feel it's inclusive of all students. I feel like we've taken an extra step to also think about the social emotional health of our students and how can we also provide enrichment for our students? And, you know, although no plan is perfect, we've done a lot of legwork to try to make sure that this plan is all-inclusive for every single student, based on what they need and what fits for their family. And including in that, just to provide that flexibility. So kind of in a nutshell, what we're working on is we're planning for our elementary students, pre-K through three. We want them to have the option to either have an asynchronous plan where we provide resources and things like we typically do, and, you know, they can work on that asynchronously. We would put that together for them. Another option would be to work at home, online with a teacher, supporting them in a specific timeframe. And then a third option would be to come in person and looking at providing transportation to get students here. So we sent out a survey with that, and a lot of people would like the in-person option to come in with a teacher. Our plan is to do that Monday through Thursday in the month of June, so June 7th through July 1st, Monday through Thursday, looking at a nine o'clock to 11:30 timeframe for those of you that are considering it, you know, for your planning purposes. Our focus for that program is really ELA, English Language Arts and Math, would be our focus with embedding in all three options, embedding some social emotional learning lessons. Our counselors are planning some lessons to either do in person, virtually, or modules where students can log in and work. For our four or five students, similar options, although we weren't considering an in-person option, just because our students that are in fourth and fifth grade can work a little bit more independently typically. However, our survey did indicate that they would like an in-person option as well. So we will look to investigate that and see what we can offer, based on that feedback that we're getting. For our middle school students and high school students, we have investigated the program called APEX that we will be looking at. It is a, it's a great program because it allows students, if they were in a, any course really, math, ELA, science, or social studies, and let's say, you know, maybe they didn't engage as much as we would have liked in the first quarter, they could go back and relearn some of that material within that program. It assesses them, it says where they are lacking based on the Ohio State standards, and there's videos and resources in there and activities that they can follow along with. So we think it's a great program. Again, it is, the whole purpose of this is not only to address the loss, it is so that we can reteach and prepare our students for the next year, but there could be, also be students that maybe took Algebra I and struggled. You know, maybe they got a B where they're normally used to getting an A. They could go back as well and be able to review. So middle school, again, we will offer some social emotional sessions with our counselors. We're also looking with our partnership with our Nancy Lowery and Associates therapist to provide some more targeted sessions or group sessions with students that need it. And then also, for both elementary and middle school, looking at enrichment options. So through our survey and our feedback, lots of interest in having some sort of a project-based learning component where students could engage for a week or two weeks. We're still determining the length and the time in the sessions. There was a lot of interest in maybe doing a book study for students that wanted to do that, maybe an art project where we can combine some music as well or theater within that. So, you know, again, wanting to provide at every level, at every need, what we can. And then finally, high school, we are looking at, again, the APEX program for those students. The APEX program also offers an enrichment opportunity for students that want to prepare for the ACT tests or the end-of-course exam tests. So they can log into that and start to prepare for that program or that process that they're going to be going through. We are traditionally going to offer our traditional summer school as well, and that includes credit recovery, so students from nine through 12 that may be failed courses, they can register for those courses. There is a cost to that as we normally charge for that program, and we have teachers where they can come in person and get help on a regular basis to pass the courses that they need so they can be on track to graduate. And then finally, we have our health, PE, econ, economics, I hope I'm saying that right, and financial literacy that we're going to be offering. So students like to take these courses so that they can get them out of the way and create room in their schedule for other electives and other courses that they want to take. So again, based on the feedback, we're seeing that half want an online option for that and half would like an in-person option for that. So we are investigating to provide both options for those students that would like to take those courses. And so again, just want to reiterate that we will send out the specifics with paperwork and registration, official registration. So this week in Cameron's parent update, we sent out just a survey to kind of gauge interest in what people would like. So we're getting a lot of feedback from our parents. I did a presentation at PTA Council, they provided great feedback and ideas. We also ran it by our administrative team, and I did a staff meeting as well to get interest and with the hopes that recruiting our staff to do a lot of this teaching because they know the standards, they know our students, and I think, you know, everybody would feel more comfortable with our teachers facilitating this learning. And so again, just the program would take place June 7th through July 1st. The hours may vary for high school. Some of those courses need 60 hours. You have to comply with those courses to make sure that they're 60 hours. So, you know, we have to comply with that. The last thing that I will say is we are gathering information. I want to go back to the learning gaps and the learning loss. So for all levels, we are gathering information based on the data that we have at hand and teacher input to target certain students that we know need to attend, that we think it is the best thing for them based on different data points. And so we will be sending out personal letters to families and those students, encouraging them to take part. But again, we've gotten questions that, you know, if I do the ELA, do I need to do the math? You know, again, this is all free, and we want it to be as flexible as we possibly can for families. So again, the only thing that we will charge for is the credit recovery or the course advancement. Everything is free. We will work with you to be as flexible as we can to meet the needs of your child. Miss Anything, Aaron?
Yeah.
Yes. So again, our English language learners, our teachers in that area are eager to plan a reading club for them because it's so important as you're learning another language and learning English, that that's continued and there's not a gap over, you know, the summer months. So looking to provide a separate program for students that need that. Thanks.
I just have two questions. One of clarification, for students in transition year, so a fifth grader, is they eligible still at the elementary school or would that be middle school?
That would still be elementary school. We're looking at reviewing concepts and things. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't maybe start to pre-teach some of the concepts that they would start with in sixth grade, but really looking at more of a review from fifth grade and continued learning. And thank you for bringing that up because I've gotten some questions on preschool. If my student is entering kindergarten. Because those are our youngest learners, we are including them in our kindergarten review, and we'll differentiate and try to, you know, tailor it a little bit to them to kind of build those skills. And, you know, again, some of that is behavioral skills as well of what school is.
To that point, do the students need to be already enrolled at the early learning preschool to be eligible or any incoming kindergartner?
They need to be enrolled with us or enrolling with us, yes.
Enrolled or enrolling?
They need to be in process, in order for us to submit them into the program, they need to be enrolled. So, you know, I will check with Sue and make sure, you know, again, there's this process of getting paperwork and everything, but as long as they're enrolled and have things in order, they're good to go.
Okay.
They don't have to be from our preschool.
Got it, thank you. The other question I have, not to complicate things, but looking at this and the flexibility and some of the needs we want, has there been any discussion about having some kind of afternoon session at the elementary level? Whether it's the project-based learning piece or, you know, for some families, you know what I mean, some families mornings just aren't going to work, whether it's a summer schedule and so forth. Has that been discussed?
Sure, you know, we primarily targeted morning just because of, you know, continuity of our staff and not to get too confusing, but we really haven't planned the days and the times of the enrichment program, so we can certainly look at that and decide, you know, what works.
Just as a clarification, it's free to the parents. There's no cost to the parents. The reason we're able to provide this is because of the COVID funding from the federal government.
Yep.
Is there for the, I know you said there's a possibility of doing online for the high schoolers. Is doing virtual for the middle schoolers or the elementary, is that also option? Is it either or, or is it just going to be in person?
We're going to have options for virtual as well. So let me just clarify. So with the virtual option where they would be logging in with a teacher, you know, they would have, at the elementary, it would be with a teacher the entire time from the nine to 11:30. I think we built in a break in there. For middle and high school, again, it's virtual, and we would also provide like office hours or options for group sessions to get questions answered. So yes, they would be on the program and working, they can be working independently, but the teacher would also be able, there'll be teachers available to reach out and hold group, you know, help sessions and answer questions as well at both levels.
Thank you for the update, Jenny. I want to move on. Anything else on responsible restart, any of that topic right now? I want to move on to a topic for our strategic planning discussion. We've talked about this previously in those sessions, but where we're at in terms of virtual learning planning. So what I'm presenting to you, I shared this with the board, but just for our community, this is an update as to where we're at. This is not a final plan. It's still only March, we still have some decisions to make, but just wanted to share an update with you and the board. You have these slides at your seat if you'd like to look around, look on at that. So again, terminology asynchronous option, that is a purchased curriculum. There's not a live teaching, there's teacher support, but it's primarily students learning the curriculum through a virtual platform. We are looking and planning that grades K to 12 would have that option. We are looking and planning that grades K to 12 would have that option next year in 2021, 22, to be a part of an asynchronous learning program. And before I go on with the other bullet points, I'd ask Erin to come up to, to the podium to talk a little bit about, you know, things we've learned, you know, with this year, we'd learn, we had Lincoln Learning K to five, we had Edgenuity, Edmentum, Apex. So, Erin, talk a little bit about those programs, what we learned, are we sticking with the same programs next year? I appreciate it.
Okay, absolutely. So, for K to five, we use what's called Lincoln Learning. What's nice about that program is we contract with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio, so we have a local contact, and then they provide for us student learning advocates. So, this is kind of a liaison between the families and the program. That way, the kids and the parents don't feel that they're on their own, so there's communication. There aren't a ton of elementary programs out there. We did look at what was available, and we feel by far this is our, our best program, so we do want to continue with Lincoln Learning. We've used this for about eight years now, this is not our first go-around. So, that we're very happy with. At the middle school level, we used Edgenuity, so that was grade six through eight. Similarly, we contract with the ESC of Northeast Ohio, and they do the liaison programming as well, which, you know, helps with, again, communication and just questions and grading and those type of things. We have that option, we also have Edmentum. And Edmentum, we had never used previously at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, just at high school. So, we have two options there. We'll look and compare benefits and, and, you know, costs to those as well as courses offered. We want to ensure that they're Ohio-aligned to, to, to match the standards. We're very happy with both programs. So, this year, we let kids pick, or we looked at what courses they needed and found the programs that aligned. We pay per course, so it's not that we're kind of expending a lot of money upfront and not using it. So, we have options there. And then we also worked, contracted with Apex this year, and we had very few students, just a handful of students that took Apex courses, but those are for some of our upper-level advanced placement courses. So, kids wanted to take them, we didn't have them in Edmentum or Edgenuity, but Apex offered them. So, we had, I think, seven or eight students take advantage of that. And again, we pay by the course, by the semester. So, looking toward next year, again, those, those same four platforms, we're looking to use. Edmentum at the high school level, I feel is a little bit stronger because, again, they're Ohio-aligned, so they have an Ohio geometry course and, you know, Ohio algebra versus just a general course. It prepares them for the end-of-course exam, and, you know, I feel very comfortable with that. All of these programs have a teacher on the other end that does the grading, it has some, some contact, they have office hours, so there's support there, but they're done independently for the most part. So, kids work through the program, you know, teachers, they can always ask questions, they can log on, they can do help sessions, but it isn't a live session, so it's all asynchronous as Dr. Reiba said. Anything that I neglected to say that I can answer for you or explain further?
Thank you Erin.
Sure.
So, in terms of some of the enhancements that we, we learned about this year, you know, K to two is a challenge. K to two is a challenge, you know, kids are learning how to read, they're learning how to write, they're learning their number sense. So, if you take a look at, there's not really a teacher there, this isn't remote learning, this is, you know, I'm going to go to a computer, I'm going to have some videos, some reading. And so, what we're looking at for next year is an enhancement is if our families with kindergartners through second graders want to go for the asynchronous option, which, why would you choose that? It's really about flexibility. I, I don't want my child in front of a computer for a typical school schedule, I'd like to do it here and there, some flexibility. We feel that there needs to be some additional requirements that align with our district program, so I put some of those foundations is, is, and Lexia, these are reading-based programs, or other district-determined learning opportunities that families would have to take part in, in addition to Lincoln Learning to make sure that whenever students transition, and even if they don't transition, that they have those foundational reading skills that, that are necessary through some programs that we feel are highly successful. We did this this year with some students, and we would do it again. Students that are identified as not on track for the third-grade reading guarantee, or even students in fourth and fifth grade who have been identified as needing some reading support, would also need to participate in some virtual reading intervention. We actually have a teacher that part of his duties is to provide virtual reading intervention support for our students that are in any of our virtual learning platforms this year. That's something that we think is important and needs to continue. The other thing that we want to take a look at is possibly place, putting in place some eligibility criteria for, for students that are currently enrolled and that would like to enroll in terms of an asynchronous learning system. What we've learned is this is not a successful system for all kids. We have some, we, you know, Erin's done a great job of putting procedures into place, communication protocols, you know, levers that, that trigger when, okay, a, a student hasn't logged in, and so often the grades are here, the attendance is at this level, but we want to make sure and have some pointed conversations with some families about what is the best educational option, because if, if, if there's reasons to stay home, we appreciate that, but at the same time, we need our students to engage and, and to be a part of the learning process, and that's been some of the challenges we've had with some students, and we need to take a look in possible criteria for that for next school year. That's kind of the update on the asynchronous program before I move to SES Connects, any questions on that? All right, so let's move SES Connects. So, K to five, right now, remember, this, this is what we call our synchronous program, it's, it's live instruction. Right now, it's in a co-taught environment, we have, you know, a classroom teacher with 20-some live students, we've got a SES Connects teacher with 20-some virtual students and they're, they're co-teaching together. So, the first thing we want to talk about is where we're at in the planning process. No matter what experience we look at the elementary level for K to five SES Connects, it's going to be a full-year commitment. Why is it a full-year commitment? Because we are allocating staffing to that program. It would just be saying, we have a first-grade classroom, and everybody needs to stay for that whole year. It's the, it's the same option here. We can't say, you can change at the trimester and then all the kids go, and as a district, we still have that teacher. So, it would be a year-long commitment. What we're still trying to figure out, we had a focus group earlier tonight, and we've been, you know, they've been surveying families, talking with families, is do we want to move forward with the co-teaching experience just as it is now, or do we want to move forward with a, a remote learning 2.0 experience? So, instead of that combination of an in-person and a virtual class, of just having those solely separated. We kind of got, we're kind of getting mixed reviews. You know, some families like that, the families that like it more are those families that have it in their homeschool, because their, their child's friends are there in the socialization piece. The people that are saying, hey, I'd rather just have a virtual experience and that piece of it, those are those families that are not typically in, in the same school. If we, so, so that's a decision point we haven't come to yet, we want to kind of get a little more information and then we'll make that decision. However, if we do go with a co-teaching experience like we are now, we do need to invest some money into improving the classroom technology. We need to have increased microphone capability in the classrooms, increased camera capability and mobility and setup that, with the TV that we have in there, it's good, but Dave's got clear ideas about what him and his team will do with these classrooms, should it be that co-taught experience to even further enhance that, that environment. We would also need to, we also need to establish an enrollment floor. It goes back to what I'm saying, is if we're going to allocate a teacher, we need to have a floor to say, we need this many students to enroll, and then we will allocate teachers. So, don't quote me on 10, it's just a number, right? So, I'm just saying, an enrollment floor is like saying, we need to at least have 10 students in the class, class caps would be the same as we, we have in other, in other grade levels. Right now, our plan is that we would offer a tuition-based full-day kindergarten program. For this year, we said if you want, a different scenario, right? We were in a heart of a pandemic. If you wanted it, the, the, the virtual option, we did not charge you. However, we are allocate, the same reasons we charge for full-day kindergarten in-person still exist for full-day kindergarten virtual. So, you know, if people want to sign up for full-day kindergarten, it would be the same tuition as they would pay for in-person. We still haven't decided if we offer whether we will or will not offer a half-day kindergarten option as a part of it. Full day, yes, we would like to have a part, half-day, we're not sure yet. Then looking at that, we'd have to define what services that will be able to be provided. You know, it's, right now, we, we offer special education services, gifted services, Title One services, English learner services. It becomes challenging in terms of staffing and adequately meeting all students' needs in, in multiple environments, so we want to be clear as we, as we share the program and finalize the program, here's exactly what we're able to offer. It, it becomes a little different next year because we have a, we are likely to have, if things continue on, an in-person option. So, the idea that this year, it was a different situation, we needed to offer all of these services. We need to look at next year, what services will be a part of this program to, to meet our student needs, and so we need to clarify that. And then we need to look at encore instruction. Right now, for all of our virtual learners, there's no encore instruction. We did provide asynchronous options, we surveyed our parents, they basically said, thanks, but we're not using it. So, we, we have that feedback that they're, they're not really looking at an asynchronous option, so possibly looking at a synchronous encore option, that's something that's on the list. Continuing on with K to five, this is where it gets a little challenging. We understand that families want as much time as possible to decide, right? We know that a few months makes a huge difference in the world we're living in right now. And asking a family to commit in April, although I would love to do that, it makes our life a lot easier, is not realistic. But there needs to be a deadline. So, right now, our, our timelines are, families would need to commit to SES Connects no later than July 15th. That aligns with our other deadlines of intra-district enrollment, that they would need to let us know. What we would do is we'd try to work ahead of it a little bit, we would post the positions no later than June 1st, we'd offer people positions by the end of June, and then they'd be on the July board agenda if we need, need them. So, we kind of working at the, two, two parallel paths at the same time. We cannot wait till July 15th to start posting and finding teachers. So, so that, that would be the plan there. One of the things we're doing right now is we have two work groups going on of, of elementary and middle school and high school teachers, that we're looking at those that are, are involved in the SES Connects program right now, what, what are they, what experiences are they having, what are some areas to problem solve? So, so those are some areas that, you know, we're going to use to, to, to filter and, and work through this plan. And the other thing that we've got to work on is how do we want to code students in our system? So, right now, you know, we're making it work, but are we going to have a SES Connects building, for lack of a better term, or are we going to keep students in their home building? It's just a, it's just a data-keeping piece that we've got to, we've got to manage. That's K to five SES Connects, kind of what, where our heads at right now, what we're thinking. Any questions or feedback on the K to five portion?
I have one question. Have we had a chance to survey or talk to any of the parents of students that are on the other end of the SES Connects program in the classrooms to find out what the kids in the classrooms' experiences are like?
No, we haven't done that.
Okay. I think, I'd personally like to see that piece.
Sure.
Because I think that, that program could have potential negative effects on the classroom learning, and I'd want to know those before making a decision.
We can do that. Looking at six to 12, SES Connects, so, so this is the live-streamed option that we have for our families at the secondary level. When we take a look at commitment, the commitment, it depends on which pathway we go. For, for, we've got a, a little more flexibility at the secondary level, either it would be a commitment of a semester or a commitment of a full year, once we determine that, that pathway. So, we take a look at live streaming, one of the things we've got to work through is not all classes work well through a, a live-streamed experience or defining what those courses will be. And then we also need to determine and have clarity after this year's experience, are, is it going to be a binary decision of you, you're in a virtual program or you're in an in-person program, or are we going to let students choose? Could they, is it a menu of options that, I want to do this class in-person, these classes SES Connects, and these classes on Edgenuity or Edmentum or Apex, based on what the offerings are? So, that's something that we're, we're taking a look at. As we talked about before, defining services that will be available for our virtual learners, and a little different than the elementary, but same concept, is do we want to offer, continue offering SES Connects, the live-streamed experience as, well, what we would call distance learning, right? Distance learning is, I'm teaching, I have live students in front of me, there's virtual students, but there's not a great amount of interaction, I'm just logging into the classroom to see, listen, and learn. The reason we're, we're saying next year, we want to be clear that it's not really a concurrent experience, we love to throw out all these terms, don't we? So, I, I sound smart up here, but Dave just tells me the words to say and corrects me when I'm wrong, and so now I've learned it after all these months. But a concurrent experience means, is that integration between virtual students and live students in one experience. We simply do not have the technology capability to really get to that level of, of a concurrent experience because of the cameras, because of the sound. Our teachers are doing a phenomenal job, and, and there, there are some classes that are making it work, but really to get to what it would truly should be, it would be a huge financial investment because you're talking about almost every classroom in, in the district. So, what we, what we want to be clear with our families as, as we go to next year is, you're looking at that distance learning experience, which I described, or possibly a remote 2.0 experience, which we've talked about, one teacher with a class of virtual learners. That works at the middle, that remote 2.0 experience is really a, a middle school option. Comes difficult at the high school just because of the vast array of classes. So, what, what we mean by that remote 2.0 experience is if we have enough students enroll, again, we need to set that enrollment floor, and we can say, hey, you know, I'm looking at Seth over there, Seth teaches math, he's got, you know, 90 kids in his math class, we could take those 90 kids and put them over four periods a day, right? So, 22, 23, 24 kids, those are still good set class sizes, and that fifth period, we'll just make it a virtual math class. So, we're, we're not, we're not, you know, we're, we're not putting anybody at a disadvantage, you know, 23, 24, 25 kids is still a good amount of kids, you know, in a class, and then we can use that period for just a virtual math class period. If we could do that, that's an option we're looking at. If not, it would be that distance learning option. The one thing that we would have to make sure though, if we go forward with that distance learning option, is that we want to cluster students in that same course into the same class period. So, right now, if I'm a teacher at the high school and I'm teaching, you know, English 10, I may have two in my first-period class, one in my second, and four in my third. It's not so much about the kids and the live streaming, but it's about the ability of the kids that are virtual to do, you know, when we do class discussions, they've got a group together. You know, you know, it's easier to integrate and do that concurrent experience if we have students grouped together. The enrollment deadline is bumped up simply because course scheduling, right? At the, at the high school level, we've got to get students in courses, this is going to cause, you know, could cause major adjustments to teachers' courses, our guidance counselors are only with us through like the first week of June, and so that's something that we need to bump up that enrollment deadline so we can move forward accordingly. Any questions on six to 12, kind of where, where we're at and what we're thinking about?
Cameron, I got a question. You, you talked about potentially having the students have the ability to pick or select in-person for a couple of classes.
Yeah.
Asynchronous for another couple, and then, you know, remote or, or virtual for a couple of the ones. Would you cap it, cap the number of classes a student could sign up for? In, in the sense like, normally they have, what, eight, eight periods, seven periods?
Yeah.
What, if somebody decided, hey, I want to try and take 10, 10 classes, are we going to allow that? Where they could try and get ahead, or is it, we're going to try to still keep it at the, the same number of, of classes?
Yeah, we, we would try, you know, we have some students that, because of various AP classes, will try and squeeze another one in there than the, more than the typical day, but we would stay consistent with our, our, our class load. You know, it, we, we do have some students that, you know, will, will throw an online class, an extra one in there, but we want them to be successful. And, and there's also, you know, the one thing in high school that really kind of limits that is there, there's a pathway, there's only so many, because of the prerequisites, there's only so many courses they can really get, grab at, at one time, so we would try to keep them within that window.
Okay, thank you.
So, the last slide on this topic is just, you know, kind of consideration. So, what I want to share is right now, we do not have the ability to offer SES Connects next school year. It's not a Strongsville City School issue, it's a state law issue. So, remote learning is not an acceptable educational platform for a, for a school district. The state legislator passed a law allowing it for this school year, that law expires at the end of the school year, and there's no current legislation or, you know, discussion about, you know, what's, are they going to about, you know, what's, are they going to extend it, are they going to create a new bill? Now, there's a lot of time, right? They're, they're just getting going with a lot of their legislation, and there's a budget bill, which a lot of stuff gets thrown into. But I just want to be clear, right now, we're planning, we're moving forward, we're being prepared, but unless there's a law change, SES Connect, any remote learning option will, is, is not on the table unless that law changes. Other considerations we've talked a lot about today, what are best practices for our students, whether it's our youngest learners, our middle school students, our high school students? We're evolving our program to try and, and meet the needs of, of lessons learned this year. The big thing is student enrollment. This is a needs-based program, right? We've, we've talked about whether it's at the secondary level or elementary school, so these are real numbers. We just ask for people to fill out, you know, an interest. So, right now, based on their, these numbers, we would not offer any SES Connect program next year. You, you take a look at 5th grade, we have four total students that are interested. One is a yes, three are a maybe, and of those, two would choose an asynchronous program, and two would choo, choose a synchronous program. So, we are able, based on the law, we are able to still offer that asynchronous program, right? It's a different context than the remote learning. So, we, we would still, no matter what, we're able to have that option. Enrollment doesn't matter, law doesn't matter, we're still able, still able to have that asynchronous program, but synchronous, our synchronous SES Connect program is based on the law, i- is, is based on enrollment as well. So, you know, again, not a lot of interest so far. We had a focus group earlier tonight, we asked that specific question, you know, what, what are the conditions that would bring you back to in-person learning? And I would say probably, what, about 75, 80% of the people were looking to come back next school year. These are current families that have been in virtual learning all year, whether it be for the social-emotional piece, whether it be for the prevalence of vaccines, some people just waiting to see how things go with the summer, and, and do we see a third wave, or, but, you know, we'll, we'll see where that goes. And then we talked about teacher work groups, we're currently working through those. So, we're going to continue to work, we're going to continue to plan, but if we don't see enrollment once we get to those periods, or we don't see a, a law change, then, then that will not be an option for next year for our school district. Any questions or follow-up, or?
Hi. And I, we've had the conversations prior to this, and we've delved into it. We did the, the virtual learning options because of a global pandemic, and so I don't have an, I don't have a answer, I just have a, a question of, you know, ultimately, we're not going to build something that doesn't have any parent demand. And, you know, I, I wonder, and I think the responses are indicative of it, if, if the trends with, with the pandemic continue come fall, is the majority, are the majority of our parents going to want in-person options? And that's, you know, I, I think that's going to be the crux of it.
Yeah.
Is, you know, if the majority of parents want their children back in school in person, you know, at that point, it, it becomes, you know, why would we go through the effort and the work, et cetera, to, to develop something that doesn't have a demand or a need? The other question, you know, and Cameron and I, you and I have talked about this, is, you know, this was an experiment that our hands were forced on. We do need to take the time to say, you know, the remote learning, what is, what is the true result of remote learning? Anecdotally, you have examples of people who've been, or students who have been very successful with it. Anecdotally, you have examples of students who it's just been awful. I don't, you know, we're doing summer school on steroids because the learning hasn't been what it has been in person. So, I think it's important for us to be aware of all of that, and make sure that not only are we offering, you know, not only are we planning for these things, but at some point, if, if we're dealing with, hey, the flexibility may be there, but it's not the best way for students to learn, we need to have that conversation, whether it be at a district level or an individual student level, and we're prepared for those conversations, but I wanted to make sure to talk about it. And then the one thing we haven't talked about that I know George will help us with is the financial prudence point part of it. You know, we've talked about if we wanted the, the Star Trek level of technology, the investment that would be, you know, we do need to have a, at some point, depending on interest, we need to have a conversation of, are we adding cost to have these multiple options? And I don't have any answers now, I just know we'll, we'll need to work through those. Any, anybody else have anything?
I have a couple of questions. We just did this survey that produced these results in the last couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, yeah, a couple of weeks ago.
So, is the next, are we thinking the next time we would get any data in this regard would be July? Because, because what I'm wondering is, that's a long time between now and July, for us to keep investing all this time and energy in a program that at this point looks like it won't go because of the law and because of the numbers, would there be need to get feedback in, interim?
So, I, I think the, I think the law has a, a good possibility of being fixed.
Okay.
You know, there, it's just, there's other things pressing that are more on the radar right now for the legislators in terms of schools. So, that, that's a great question, and I don't know the, what, what you stated is kind of where we're at right now, is like, this, this is a lot of effort, a lot of energy, a lot of focus for something that may not come to fruition, but I, I can't get parents to decide, you know, how do I get parents to decide something earlier? And, you know, they're, they're all, nobody, I mean, today on the call, nobody wants to commit. And so, you know, that, that's the part of, if I would, I, I mean, it's easy enough to put out another survey, right? But, you know, when are we going to get realistic data that, that's going to help us to say, do we continue down this pathway, or, or do we stop? You know, and, and maybe the, I'm just thinking out loud, Miss Bissell, but, you know, maybe, maybe it's just we, we continue, we continue to kind of get the pulse, you know, kind of where are we at right now? Right now, we have, you know, 750 students that are in a virtual learning platform, so 13 to 14% of our population. In this last interest survey, we had 64 students total that said yes, yes or maybe, and as you're seeing, 22 of those 64 said yes. I think today, you know, we had some defendants that said, "Yeah, this, this works for me and my family," but again, I would say the percentages are, are similar. So, maybe, let, let me talk about it with our team, see if we've got some ideas that, that we can come up with, maybe continue to get the pulse, and, and, you know, maybe we can start to be a little more specific of, if we get to this point and we're not seeing any increase in response, then we're just going to go with and enhance the asynchronous option as much as we possibly can, but that's something I'd like to think a little bit more about.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, that's, my concern is, is similar to Rich's, in that I know we're investing an order and amount of energy into trying, you know, to have this prepared, and with that energy comes a financial resources, and how much of energy and financial resources are we going to spend between March and July? That, that's my concern, to make sure we're making the best use of, of those. I'm not running people ragged.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a stretch to say that for, you know, many parents are looking at this the same way they looked at when the pandemic first started. If there's a, a risk, if there's a perceived concern about health and safety, parents are going to want to have that option to keep their children in a, in a synchronous learning and keep them at home. Candidly, you know, if the trends keep on going, and what we see happening in Ohio and, and in the country continues, I think a lot of parents are like, you know, as long as I feel sa, that I can send my children to school safely, well, that's what I'm going to do. And it seems like the data's showing that, so I think we just continue the course, but if the trends continue, I think common sense will dictate our answer.
The last thing I want to talk about in this update is, oh, I'm sorry, Seth, go on.
No, only as I say is, if the laws don't change, and, and from a techno, or from a financial standpoint, I think that makes a lot of sense as well, I, I agree with that. One thing I would try to challenge our, our district at of, if we, if the families decide to go into more of an asynchronous scenario, how do we continue to, to connect with them? Like, we strive to do this year, and, and continue to enhance that. And at the same time, from a teaching level, from a district level, how do we continue to evolve with the technology that's out there? So that if, if we have to go through this again, or some other scenario, how can we flip that switch a little bit quicker to, to adjust as, as needed? So, continuing, I guess, to, to evolve with the, the tech and the trends that are, that are out there to continue to make us a premier district.
Absolutely, absolutely. The last thing, kind of going on that idea is, you know, we talked about, you know, in, in the past at our strategic planning, we talked about a digital resource library, something that, you know, we, we utilize, we had a lot of teacher-created videos, and when we talked about this, this was a little like January, February, so we were still right in the, in the heart of it. And so, one of the things we, we talked about was, should we create our, an internal digital resource library for, for our students, for our district? And, and so, after, after the focus groups we've had, after talking it through, this is not something that's come up through our focus groups as, as a need, something, they, they want things for their teachers. And, and so, what, what I would suggest, and I just wanted to talk about and make sure we were on the same page in, in terms of this, is having a global digital resource library in terms of teacher-created videos that families can go access at, at other times. We haven't seen that need, you know, we've talked to our parents, the questions we've asked in our focus groups are, what are some things we've done this year that you would like to continue? What do we get? They love the live streaming, especially when kids are out home for whatever, quarantine, isolation, or I broke my leg and I'm home for a little bit. They love the Google Classroom, the consistency of that, they love a lot of the tech applications that we put in there, but we're, we're not, they're, they're not getting, we're not getting feedback on, you know, the, the digital content, other than keeping it going with what is happening in the classroom next year. So, our suggestion is, instead of moving for, like, kind of developing our own digital content and library, which, that's a huge lift, and not sure as to the use right now outside of a pandemic, but how do we integrate this work into the resources that are made available by our teachers? I think a lot of our teachers, you know, whether it be Screencastify, or, or some of the other options, you know, recording lessons, recording instruction, doing some, you know, the interactive work that we've done, we, we think that's important to keep going, keep posted, have a consistent learning management system or Google Classroom. So, that would be our recommendation moving forward. I wanted to see if there was consensus on the board with that plan, or if there was other feedback.
I'm good with that. With the, I mean, I, I know as the, like we talked about before, the students like having that information from their individual teachers, and they've already customized their classroom that, where that information is directly related to their students, so although, you know, I think the digital, the library is almost like going to, you know, YouTube and grabbing a video or something like that. I mean, it'll be helpful maybe, but, I mean, I like the idea of, you know, I, I think students appreciate having that information come directly from their teachers. As, I mean, they have like Khan Academy or whatever you can go to and get a lot of information for, but for, I mean, you can use that when you want to, or on an as-needed basis, but, you know, having something directly from your teacher is probably more precise to what you're working on.
I agree with Sheri as well. I think that trying to integrate the work into the, kind of the classroom makes the most sense for students and just financially for the district. My one, I guess, ask would be if, if we're going to work on this, to make sure we outline clear expectations for the teachers, just so that they're all working from the same set of expectations, so, so that we're not all over the place, we don't have equity issues, so that all students have the access to the same thing. I think that was the vision of the global, so that all students had access to this, and if, if we set expectations for the teachers and a way to make sure that they're following through on them, then we can have that same sense of access anyway.
I see nods of heads, so?
I was gonna, the, I think we're all in agreement that the, the ability for teachers to communicate with parents through technology, that's one of the, one of the positives I think we can point to that is an outcome of, of the pandemic. Parents have had, have had the best opportunities to know what's going on in their, in the classroom, to know what the expectations are for their children, et cetera, the communication, the, the ability to do, you know, to go into Google Classroom and know what was done yesterday, the day before, et cetera, "Hey, you know, sweetheart, you're, you're late on this project," or whatever. That opportunity and that ability has never been so strong as with the tools we have, so I wouldn't want to lose any of those tools, and I think we want to be able to continue them. I think the, you know, if I use the example of parent-teacher conferences, if we continue with the technology, I think parent-teacher conferences become some, an anarchic, arctic, anarchic thing of the past.
Archaic.
Yeah, what, what you all said.
[laughing]
Where you don't need that because parents and teachers have the ability to stay in communication all the time, and you don't have to artificially wait for that quarter to pass, you know, teachers can, can reach out to parents and, and communicate quickly, so I wouldn't want to lose those things. I think the digital library has value, I'm, you know, I don't, we don't need to prioritize it, you can only do so much in a day. The only thing I would share as far as that digital library is, is, you know, my one daughter found it invaluable to be able to watch a lecture after, and she was going in person, and she was there for the lecture, but she's like, you know, a lot of times you just don't grasp it the first time around, and the ability to watch it a second time, and, "Oh, now the homework makes sense," I wouldn't want to lose that. I think there's some value to that, and I think that's something, you know, we don't have to do right now, but I, I would want us to remember that, and, you know, when the time's there to, to continue to develop it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the dis-
I think, I understand, and I agree with the global digital resource library, maybe not necessarily a progress right now. From the, the classroom standpoint, is there just a general place that the, that the students can go to, like you were saying with those, those lessons? Or is it, is always tied to a specific assignment, or something else, or just like, "Hey, here's recorded from this week," or "Here's, here's whatever." I guess, if it's, I think it's important to have it tied to their, their individual teacher, it makes a lot of sense. But to the point of, does the student feel to go back and look at it? How's that, do you know how that's set up? Or Dave, you know, maybe?
It would be set up through the Google Classroom, correct? Yeah, so it would just be, you know, that's where they could house them, and, and other teachers do it in different ways, so it doesn't become so cluttered, but that's something in the Google Classroom, it can live on there forever unless the teacher archives it, correct? So, so that's something that, yeah, yeah, hey, I can go back a couple of weeks, see that, you know, that precursor lesson to what I'm doing now, that'd be the idea.
Right.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the feedback and the discussion on those items. Going back to the agenda, I've got a few items under my section to, for your consideration. First of all, is a resolution authorizing the required 3rd grade Ohio State tests in paper format. Be resolved upon my recommendation that the Grade III Ohio State tests in English Language Arts and Mathematics shall be administered in paper format for the 21-22 school year pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code section listed there, and as amended by Senate Bill 216 as stated in Exhibit H. The next one, number four, is Rite at School service agreement. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the service agreement between Rite at School and Strongsville City Schools be approved as in Exhibit I. And finally, number five, Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio Primary Service Agreement. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education enters into a two-year agreement with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio to implement the county services listed in the exhibit as per the Ohio Revised Code for the school years 21-22 and 22-23, beginning July 1st of this year, and expiring July, or June 30th of 2023, is found in Exhibit J. Any questions on those three items? Moving on, we'll have Mr. Brechner, our Operations Manager, with some, some gifts in his report this month.
Good evening, everyone. A couple of gifts to make everyone aware of that were given to the district. The first one is the Cuyahoga County Farm Bureau donated two books with a combined value of $36.98 to the Surratt Elementary School Library, and the Cleveland Browns donated 24 shoulder pads valued at $4,800 to the Strongsville High School Athletic Department.
Thank you. Steve?
Hey, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Are they for football, or are there other uses for shoulder pads?
Just plain football is, is all I'm aware of.
I'm just amazed that shoulder pads are that expensive, so thanks to the Browns.
They're the best shoulder pads the Browns could give us.
Two, two hun, I, I would not have thought shoulder pads are $200 each, so that's awesome. Thank you.
No problem.
Next up with the curriculum report is our Director of Curriculum, Ann Green.
Thank you. Two items for curriculum this evening. First item is recommendation of superintendent that we have an affiliation agreement- First item is recommendation of superintendent that we have an affiliation agreement with Walden University and Strongsville City Schools be approved as presented in Exhibit K, and that will allow teachers from that district, or students from, I'm sorry, from that college, to be placed in our district for student teaching experiences. And item two, we have a student-teacher placement. It would be placed with a Strongsville High School teacher, and it's a student from Baldwin Wallace University, that dates March 19th through April 30th of this year. Thanks.
Thank you, Erin. We have no items under Student Services, and next we'll go to our Human Resource Report with Jenny.
Thank you. Under Human Resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under E1, the resignation of a non-certificated staff member, resignation of a non-certificated supplemental. Under E2, we have the retirement of one of our middle school teachers, and again, we'll celebrate those, I believe, in May. Under E3, appointments for non-certificated staff, appointment for a non-certificated athletic supplemental contract, appointments for certificated substitutes, appointment for a non-certificated substitute. Under E4, changes in hours for a non-certificated staff. Under E5, change in status for a non-certificated staff, change in status for a certificated contract extension. Under E6, continuing contracts for non-certificated staff. Under E7, medical leaves for certificated staff, and medical leaves for a non-certificated staff. Under E8, unpaid leaves for certificated staff, and unpaid leaves for a non-certificated staff. And finally, under E9, volunteers for substitutes. And that concludes my report.
And finally, our Director of Instructional Technology, Dave Binkley, with his report for the month. Dave?
Good evening. I have two items for you. The first one is a separate vote. The first one is technology upgrades, so be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board approves the purchase of Chromebooks, computers, Chromebook tablets, and Chrome Management licenses not to exceed $150,000.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Can you give us a summary, Dave?
Yeah, every year, part of our inventory goes end-of-life for Chromebooks. They're typically good for four or five years. Some models can extend to six based off of the manufacturer. We currently have, right now, two, possibly three models going out at the, during this summer, so we need to replace those. We currently have about 1,000 devices going out of service, so this would help supplement those, and mainly go towards our elementary schools where those devices will be located.
Can you talk a little bit about our challenges with sourcing?
You know, there's a lot of things still going on with the supply chain. One of the biggest news right now is, you know, Lenovo's changing their chips, so there's current inventories that some districts have put supply, or orders in earlier this school year that those are going to be canceled. We luckily got, you know, most of our order in, and then they'll have to reorder those if the districts didn't get theirs with the new purchase. We do have a couple outstanding, but we do have enough for our students that we were looking forward to for next year, so that's not a big issue for our new computers for sixth and ninth grader students. But the biggest thing right now is we're still seeing a supply issue, you know, making the processors, the chips. Right now, you even probably know the automobile industry is having issues finishing their cars, because the processors that they need are in Chromebooks computers, and they're just not being able to be made right now. So, it's a big industry across the board.
And I anticipate we're gonna have these kinds of issues for at least the next year, not just in technology, but supply chain for manufacturing, for a host of issues, is just in, in one of the most tight situations. Steel, any, any raw material, sourcing it is, is difficult at best, and when you can source it, price increases are occurring everywhere.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't anticipate that scenario changing in the next year, so it's something we'll, we'll have to be aware of and plan for.
Yeah, and Google's been nice. They've been working with some of the manufacturers of extending those licenses, but you know, these are, are these student devices are made to, made to do just a couple of things at a time, and that when you're extending these devices that are supposed to be made for a four-year lifecycle to five, six, or there's a model that's right now looking at seven years, you know, what is the quality of that, that piece of equipment that our students are using, we have to also take into consideration.
Dave, this year with the pandemic, we ended up one-to-one with our students. As we move forward in purchase for the elementary, are we gonna stay at the one-to-one?
Yes. We have, some of our models are not going out of end-of-life till September. That would definitely allow us to start the year one-to-one as well. And with state testing, there's always a couple versions of the operating system that they allow, so depending on how quickly Google does updates, those devices could be good for state testing for at least another half a year, or possibly a year after that. So, we should be able to stay one-to-one and able to use the devices for our state testing.
Thank you.
I mean, ultimately, we're a one-to-one district, and, you know, with the pandemic, we understood we had to be flexible on that situation, but going forward, our goal is to remain and always be a one-to-one district, so if, if you're ever challenged to maintain that, we'd want to know that well ahead of time.
Okay.
Any other discussion? George, take the roll.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bisson?
Yes.
Miss Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
And my second item goes along with the first one. It's bump armor Chromebook cases for 2021, 2022 school year. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the purchase of student Chromebook cases at a cost not to exceed $15,000. This year, we started sending the Chromebooks home, three through five, so this will help us provide cases for next year's third grade students to start taking the devices home as well.
Thank you, Dave. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Cameron. Next on our agenda is report on Polaris Career Center. Michelle?
Yes, like we are here in Strongsville, Polaris is really gearing up for next year, so we've started to make decisions regarding that. So, we approved the calendar, so that will be available shortly on Polaris's website, and as we started a couple of years ago, our spring break is aligned with, with Polaris's that will continue. We've also fixed fees and things like that for next year for adult education. In terms of Strongsville and its direct involvement, for students and families that are interested, there are still tours available, and if you go to the website, there's a flashing red link right there, you can't miss it. Click that if you're interested. And in addition, there's currently low enrollment at Polaris across all of our participating schools, and I think a lot of that has to do with the situation we're coming out of at the pandemic. But in terms of Strongsville specifically, of our current sophomore class, we've had 82 applications, which represents 17% of our sophomore class. So, of course, Polaris is interested in, in getting that number a little bit higher. This is where we typically cap out, isn't it, Rich? So, we're right where we typically are, but that doesn't mean that it's not a great option for some families that maybe aren't already considering it. And to that end, I wanted to highlight two new, I've mentioned them before, but specifically these two programs that are new at the high school, one of them is the biomedical science. We've never had that on our Strongsville campus before, so we'll have that. And then the second one is media arts programs, and I did read through the titles of the courses today, and I thought they were kind of interesting, so I'm gonna share them in case this sparks some kind of interest. I have four budding video game players at home, and so this sounded like something they would be interested in someday. Course one, and there's four, there's a four-course set in this program. Intro to Media Arts, The Wonderful World of YouTube and Video Creation. Two is Multimedia and Web Production. Third class is Video and Audio Production, and the fourth is Digital Cinema and Filmmaking. So, if that sparks your interest, go click that little red link and check out what Polaris has to offer. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Michelle. Next is report on legislation. Sheri, do you have an update for us?
Well, Cameron covered some of it, the report, House Bill 200, the report card reform. Thanks, Cameron, for working with them on that. Let's see, the governor asked that we do, do something about the learning loss, and we've decided to do summer school for that, so there are a couple of options, but that was, that was that. And then, let's see, oh, the Fair Funding Act, it passed in the House, and so now it's on to the Senate. There were superintendents and treasurers that were leaders in that to get that House Bill passed, and now we're on to the Senate to see what we can do. So, I guess we can expect to hear from, or maybe the treasurers and superintendents can expect to hear for something from a senator or their staff to see if we can work on getting it passed in the Senate. So, and that concludes my report.
And I'll just piggyback on that. There is a grassroots superintendent and treasurer group, and both, both Dr. Raiba and Mr. Onagostu are members of that, and so they'll be working closely with, ah, brain hiccup, Mr. Patton and Mr. Dolan, and make sure we continue to represent Strongsville well. It seems like there is a lot of momentum to pass this Fair Funding Act, whether it'll be incorporated into the biennium budget, or whether it'll be a standalone bill, still remains to be seen. But the other, I think the other positive is that locally Bride Sweeney, who is House Representative, Rocky River, West Side, Cleveland area, she is one of the sponsors for it, and I think having that local representation will help us. So, we look forward to your grassroots efforts, and let us know how we continue to help. Next is Board Liaison Reports. City Council?
Yes, City Council has had two meetings this month. At the beginning of the month, Council voted unanimously to rebuild the covered bridge, Walter F. Erkhelt Bridge in the Metro Park, so that'll be exciting. Mr. Short reported that the COVID numbers continue to decline at Southwest, and the hospital is now administering COVID vaccine shots at the Middleburg Heights Rec Center. The Economic Development Committee will be meeting on March 29th, and the news from our Recreation Center Committee, homecoming is a go. There'll be more details to come as guidelines are released from Columbus. And we have over 600 kids signed up for baseball, T-ball, and softball this summer, so all of our fields will be in use in Strongsville. And they, the Recreation Committee will be meeting soon, date to be determined, but Mrs. Kosick did say that she will be trying to plan a movie night again this summer, so lots of exciting things going on. That concludes my report.
Oh, what about that cover bridge? Is it gonna be a two-liner? Not.
And we thank Mrs. Kosick for joining us and continuing the City Council-School Board relationship. Next is Strongsville Education Foundation. And before Laura gives her report, I'll just share that I tried to buy the, the NCAA squares, and they're sold out, so I'm waiting for good news.
Well, I did ask, and no, they are not opening another bracket.
I'll continue to wait for good news.
But more good news is, by selling out, they were able to raise $5,000, so that's very exciting, and that all goes to scholarships and grants for our students. They will be doing another raffle fundraiser in April, and they're trying to do a monthly fundraiser, so Rich, you're gonna have to mark your calendar for the beginning of the month to get in on these. So, each month, they will be doing a fundraiser, and this is all to try to make up for the jockeys and juleps. That is not going to happen this year due to the pandemic. They have approved two grants, one for expansion of a theater program at the high school, and most learned, recently, the Learning Garden. And one thing to note is that they have not received very many grant requests. I know Dr. Raiba continues to send it out to our staff, but there is money there for grants when, when we need it. And that concludes the report.
Thank you.
Laura, I have a question.
Yes.
Do you know what the Learning Garden is?
I'm gonna have to ask Dr.
It's actually planting a, a garden, and so it's, it's buying the materials to, to do a, a garden.
Is that at the high school, or is that one?
High school.
It is at the high school.
Is it more in the garden, or is the act of planting the garden a?
I believe the act of planting the garden is the learning.
I can picture, I can picture space where it would go to be.
Yeah.
Quiet and warm.
It's for our ASAP program, isn't it?
Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's a continuation with the pro, I forget the teacher's name, what he's doing this year with the spice garden.
Mr. Edmonds, I think.
Yeah, Mr. Edmonds, that's the teacher. So, right now, with federal funds, he's using a program where it's video demonstration with the kids, teaching them how to cook.
Oh, yeah.
Different things, so I think this is an expansion of that, where they'll, they'll be growing the, the, the food and then moving it to, to, to cook it, so I think that's the way I understood it.
Yeah.
And we'll have the, both those grants, so I received those awards too, so we'll have both those grants on the board agenda next month for board approval and appropriation adjustment.
Thank you, Laura. Strongsville PTA Council?
Okay, Jenny?
Calco was our guest speaker at our last meeting, and I thought we got some good feedback, good questions on the summer school ideas. Same here, Michelle has some good questions too today. We're still planning, or they are still working on the planning of Founder's Day, I think Laura's working on that. Are we going, any, any updates or no?
I'm sorry?
We're still working on it.
Still, still deciding. And then Katie wanted me to say thank you to the Strongsville Early Learning Preschool for including the Strongsville Council PTA Scholarship Fund as part of their drive-in movie fundraiser, so thank you for that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Sheri. Student Achievement, Seth?
Yeah, I was pretty cool on this, this time. Mrs., Mrs. Holland's fifth grade science class at Surrah, one of the students there, their mother, Mrs. Leah McIntyre, has actually worked on the multi-mission radios, radio stopic, I'm not, I'm not saying that right, radio stop topic, thermal electric generator that was on the Mars rover. And so, Mrs. McIntyre actually spoke to the class, and then Mrs. Holland's class watched the, the landing of the Mars rover, so way to, you know, connect science to what they were learning, because they're actually learning about the solar system right now, and kind of brought it all together, which was pretty cool.
Very cool, and I think I'm gonna take back my recommendation on the digital learning library, because I'd really like to see her, her presentation. That's awesome.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Seth. Board Committee Reports. Finance Committee?
So, we had a chance to, to meet. It'd been about a year, so it was great to see everybody again, and really appreciate everybody that came out. We talked about just the kind of financial updates, where we're at, which George had gone over and shared with us. The, talked about the digitization of the, digitization of the records, and also the committee talked about some upcoming focuses. In the past, we focused on the healthcare and kind of reforming that, reformatting that, and then also the refunding of the, the debt, which again, we saved the 500 mils on that. So, upcoming, one of the things is the level, levies that are up for renewal, so we talked about that briefly, and definitely some more to tomorrow, more to come on that, but it's great to see everybody and look forward to our next meeting. That concludes our report.
Thank you, Seth. Policy Committee? Our next meeting is to be announced, and I'm sure we're all excited about it. Facilities Committee?
Yes, we did have a meeting last Thursday night. As Seth said, it's great to see everybody, we had great attendance. We talked about a building project list. Each of our custodians went through their buildings and picked out things that they thought needed worked on, put it into a spreadsheet, and Steve is meeting with all of them to kind of create a punch list of how we can fix up our buildings. We received a $27,000 grant, a safety grant, so we were using that money to buy cameras for our elementary buildings, and we spent a lot of time talking about the creation of a 10-year plan for the district that focuses on the need to build and/or renovate our elementary schools. So, I have a feeling we'll be talking about that a lot more as in the coming months and year, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Laura. Business Advisory Council?
We can finally report that we have a meeting coming up at the end of April, April 30th, at 7:30 a.m. here in the admin building.
Thank you. Next is Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent calendar at this point of the agenda means all items in this agenda with asterisks are adopted by one single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Hearing none, take the roll.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Superintendent's Report. Back to you, Cameron.
Just some updates. We have our spring concerts coming up, and so you could see the dates here. We've got Wednesday, the 24th, getting close to spring break there. We've got the high school concerts. They'll be in the high school main gymnasium, and then the following week, we've got all city. And then for orchestra, over a couple of days, we will still be meeting the capacity requirements that we have to meet, but these will all be livestreamed and, and virtual for, for families to, to see as well. And just a reminder that we're getting close to spring break for our district, so April 2nd to, Friday, April 2nd through the 9th is our spring break. So, you know, just make sure that, that's on your radar, and that concludes the timely information.
Any Board of Education others?
I have two, if I could. The Strongsville Athletic Boosters is doing a calendar raffle for the month of April. You can buy tickets for $10 for many of our student athletes up through March 24th. And my second announcement is next Wednesday, March 24th, the Strongsville After Prom Committee is having a fundraiser at Chipotle from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. 33% of our sales will come back to help us fund after prom.
Thank you, Laura. Any other others? Hearing none. Meeting notification, a regular Board of Education meeting work session will be held Thursday, April 1st, that's not a joke, at 7:00 p.m. in the meeting room of the admin building. And then our next regular Board of Education meeting will be Thursday, April 15th at 7:00 p.m. There is a location change. We will be in the auditorium of Strongsville High School. As we alluded to, we have a lot of recognitions, so we're going to take advantage of the extra space in the auditorium. So hopefully, we'll see you on April Fool's Day, and then we'll see you on April 15th. We do have reason for executive session under the topics of?
To consider the employment of a public employee.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, the motion carries. We will enter into executive session at 8:55. We have no expectation of further business. Thank you for your attention, and have a great weekend.